I now call the Huntsville City Council order, all that were able to and like to, please rise for the invocation led by Pastor Robert Somerville, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Chair.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, I pray that this will be a productive session for the council on behalf of the city of Huntsville. I would ask that the Spirit of unity would prevail here. May love and humility dominate the atmosphere of this chamber. Isaiah the prophet gave us an appropriate formula for success in counseling by declaring these seven attributes of God on the people of Israel, and they are good today. May the Spirit of the Lord rest upon this council, the Spirit of wisdom, the Spirit of understanding, the Spirit of counsel, the Spirit of strength, and the Spirit of knowledge, the Spirit of the fear of the Lord. May it be so in our homes, in our city, in our county, and in our nation, and in this council tonight. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice-
Pastor Rob. Thank you Pastor Somerville. The minutes from the regular council meeting held November 6, 2014 have been received and they'll stand approved if there's no objections. We're now at council resolutions. A is a resolution recognizing Topper Bernie for his devotion to the children and teachers of our great city and for lending his efforts and extra fees to the many other organizations which he has assisted for the betterment of all citizens of the city and other local communities. Mr. Kling, do you have a motion?
I do, Mr. President. I would so move.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It passes. Mr. Kling, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, in a nutshell, it has been a privilege and a pleasure to work with Topper Bernie on the school board for the last 12 years. There is a working relationship that exists between the respective city council member and the school board member of a district, even though, and I think people understand, the school board is completely independent of us. They are represented or perceived under the state of Alabama Constitution to be equal to us. So, anyone who thinks I'm barking orders to Topper Bernie doesn't understand, and certainly Topper understands very well that no city council member, including Kling, can tell him what to do. But we had a great working relationship together for three terms, did a lot of good things. There is some overlapping that takes place, but in neighborhoods throughout the city and in the district, schools are very important. The quality of schools, the involvement of parents in the schools, the PTA, PTSA organizations, these are things that mean a lot. And one of the things that Topper had worked for, which I think is something that we appreciate from a neighborhood perspective, there were some empty schools in West Huntsville. And we certainly understand that empty schools are not good things, and Topper had worked with Dr. Wodenski and others from the school system to find what I would call good outcomes for those schools. West Huntsville Elementary School, which is in the Low Mill neighborhood, was certainly something we were concerned about because an empty school building or one that's being underutilized is something that's not going to be a good thing for the neighborhood. And we appreciate very much what the Low Mill Neighborhood Association has done to improve their school and their neighborhood. And Topper had worked to get a good outcome where the building was sold, and that building now is on the tax rolls and it's being used for a neighborhood-friendly usage. Similarly, Stone Middle School had been sitting empty, and that was a concern for the neighborhoods that were located nearby. Again, Topper had come to meetings and, you know, had done what he could to help us with that, and there's a great outcome that's underway with the development of Stone Middle School where it goes on the tax rolls. It's going to be vibrant, and it's going to bring attention to West Huntsville. And these are things that we look forward to for a good relationship. I want to tell you a little bit about my friend Topper, because Topper and I, we were friends, we had a good time, we would disagree occasionally, but overall, we worked very well. Topper graduated from Huntsville High School and from the University of Alabama with an engineering degree. He had worked for the Department of the Army for a couple of years, then he transferred to the Marshall Space Flight Center where he spent the rest of his working career. Topper spent many of his years in Huntsville as a community volunteer, serving numerous agencies such as Chaiho, CASA, the Food Bank of North Alabama, and the Heels Clinic. He's also driven the mobile soup van each month since its inception, and he tutors as often as he can. He's a member of the South Huntsville Kiwanis Club, the Madison County Emergency Food and Shelter Board, the Heels Board, the Kajoe Friends Board, and the First Christian Church Disciples of Christ. Topper wanted to continue his volunteering in Huntsville by helping young people. He called Lincoln Elementary School and talked to Larry Rice, who convinced him that Lincoln was where he needed to be. Jim Black, the principal, made Topper's volunteer services with Lincoln some of the most rewarding hours that he had ever had. Later, Jim convinced Topper to become a substitute teacher, which opened a new door for him, and it helped him become aware of the problems of teachers' -- excuse me, the teacher's face in the classroom. Topper, of course, had served for the city school board for 12 years, being elected and then being twice re-elected. And, Mr. President, I would like to present this to Topper at this time. Topper, here's a signed resolution that's signed by the mayor and the council members, and we want to give it to you just as a small way of saying thank you, and again, it's been great working with you for 12 years, and thank you for everything you've done for the schools and for the city. Do you want to say something?
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a pleasure, and hopefully, I can continue helping the city in other avenues for the rest of the days I have left. Thank you.
These are some extra copies, too.
Next is a resolution declaring the month of November 2014 as National American Indian Heritage Month. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Ms. Kling.
Mr. President, I see James Henley in the audience. I'd ask if James would please stand. James has been a leader in this community for many years, on many boards, involved in many things to help charities, to help people who aren't as fortunate as you and I are. He has done many things, and he's also the leader of the local community, and I'd like to ask if he would like to say a few comments at this time concerning the significance of the American Indian Heritage.
First of all, I'd like to thank you--
I guess we need you to come to the microphone, James.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Councilman Kling, for putting this motion forward, and for all the city council members that voted for it, and all of you up there for serving us in the city. Y'all do a fantastic job for everybody in the community and for the Native Americans as well. I'd like to ask something from the audience and from y'all. Would anybody that's got Native American in their blood, would they please stand up? There's a lot of people that don't know that they have Native American in them. For a while, it was, you couldn't talk about it, you couldn't own land or anything like that, and, but if you ever find out that you have that, you know, be proud of who you are, no matter what ethnicity you are. Always be proud of who you are and where you come from. And I just thank you so much for recognizing Native Americans and the rest of everybody every time up here. Thank you.
James, at this time, I'd like to present you with this resolution signed by the mayor and the city council. It designates the month of November as National Native American Heritage Month here in the city of Huntsville. And also, it encourages all of the residents of the city of Huntsville to observe November the 29th, 2014, as Native American Heritage Day. And thank you again for all that you've done for this community.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, James. Take care, bud. Under announcements, 15L has been deleted from the agenda. 15L has been deleted. We have no business with outside legal representation. We do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-755, rezoning property lying on the south side of Taylor Road and south of Terry Drake Road from Residence 2 District and Residence 2B District to Residence 2A District. This was set October 9, 2014, at the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This property was, this rezoning was recommended by Planning Commission. This property is approximately 19.35 acres. It's located on the south side of Taylor Road and south of Terry Drake Road. The current zoning is R2 and R2B, which is highlighted in the blue area here. The proposed rezoning for this area is R2A, which is consistent with the neighboring zoning. This also would accommodate for a single-family as well as multifamily dwellings.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-757, rezoning property lying on the north side of Governor's Drive and on the south side of St. Clair Avenue from Medical District to General Business C3 District. This was set October 9, 2014, at the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This item was also recommended by Planning Commission. It's approximately 2.80 acres. It's located on the north side of Governor's Drive and on the south side of St. Clair Avenue. The current zoning is Medical District. The proposed rezoning is C3. The property owner would like to request a C3 zoning designation because it abuts C3 as well as it would give the property owner an opportunity to maximize their land use opportunities for future development.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kling. And, Ms., can you explain what goes into a C3 district?
C3 is pretty similar to our other, to our surrounding downtown, which is located north here. It's a variety of commercial uses. You can also have office uses, you can have bars, restaurants, any type of office complex. You can also have some residential use with commercial on the ground floor, whereas the Medical District is mainly for medical uses only.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizes the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the cutting and removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. Mr. Binion?
Yes, this resolution identifies 65 properties that were in violation of the city's grass and weed ordinance. These properties are identified on attachment A by the owner and location. The owners receive a written notification by regular mail that they were in violation of the ordinance and were given 14 days to correct the violations. All 65 owners failed to respond, and Community Development issued work orders to cut the properties at a total cost of $14,589.78 and an average cost of $224.45. Attachment A also identifies the date and cost for cutting these properties. The owners received a written request by regular mail for payment, and they failed to respond, so are requesting that property assessments be placed on these properties in order to collect our costs. The owners were notified of this proposed action and could wish to speak tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at communications from the public. When I call your name, you'll have three minutes to address the council. Please give your name and address when you come to the microphone. Rusty Loisel, please.
Hello, my name's Rusty Loisel, and with Help the Homeless Veterans, I'm South Huntsville. Tonight, it's a little different than normal. Normally, we come here moaning and groaning about something, but actually, I want to give thanks to a couple people, and starting with Councilman Bill Kling. I want to thank him for opening up a dialogue about the surplus bicycles that we're possibly going to be getting to have the homeless be able to fix these bicycles and possibly have a mode of transportation to get back and forth to potential jobs. And we're working with Chief Morris with that, and we're anxiously awaiting that to happen. So I want to thank you, Councilman Kling. Thank you. I want to thank the mayor and the rest of everyone, John Hamilton, for sitting down with us a few weeks ago and at least opening up a discussion about the potential for land for the tiny homes through the Foundations of Tomorrow. We don't know if that'll happen or it won't happen, but at least we're talking, and that's a big plus right there. And now for the big one that everyone's anxiously awaiting. We're here tonight mostly for the Tiny Home Project through Foundations of Tomorrow with Nikki Beal. This is a wonderful project, and I know that there's some service providers out there that want to demonize it for one reason or another, and I'm not sure why. You would think that everyone would want to jump on board in an effort to help some of these homeless people who are living in cardboard boxes and less-than-adequate tents. They could be in a small, hard structure that they wouldn't have to worry about whether a limb's going to come down and crush them at night in the woods. They don't have to worry about the raccoons that are going to be tearing into their food. They'll be able to lock their doors and lock up the small amount of possessions that they do have in these tiny homes. They're only 120 square feet, but they're insulated, they're well-built, they're sided. And I know a few places have said, "Oh, they'll burn them to the ground." But you know what? A bunch of that's just baloney that's thrown out there to demonize a project. These things are very solid, and once you give someone a step up to getting back into productive society, and that step up being a hard structure as opposed to a tent or a cardboard box, that eases their mind a little bit. It allows them to think a little more clearly. It allows them to say, "You know what? Maybe I can do this." And it's not a solution for homelessness. Nobody ever said it was. It's merely an act of compassion for those who have so much less than all of us. We merely want to help these people make that step up the ladder, instead of trying to jump to the top into housing, which they said that there's over 1,000 people on a list homeless.
Sir, your time's up. Do you need more time?
One minute, please.
Yeah, and then after a minute, I need your address for the record, but go ahead with your one minute, please.
Yes, sir. There's, from what I understand through blogs, there's over 1,000 people who are homeless, and they're waiting on a list to get homes. But they need to be analyzed first. Shouldn't we just, and they said there's not a lack of available housing, so why not put them in housing and then analyze them? So my address is 12004 Hearthstone Circle in South Huntsville. Thank you.
Nikki Beal. Ms. Beal, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
Nikki Beal, 2527 Marjory Lane. It's in 35803.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm Nikki Beal. I talked to you guys a few weeks ago. I'm the founder of Foundations for Tomorrow. We are the ones building the tiny homes for the homeless. You guys may have not seen it, but the first one's outside of city council today. We've had so much community support. I wanted to build the first one by Christmas, and we will have two built by Thanksgiving. We have three in the works. We just started raising private donations, and within two weeks, we have a supplier who has agreed to build the first 30, provide all the materials for them. I have labor donated for at least the first five, if not more, and so currently, all I have to pay for is the trailers for them. And the reason we have to keep them on trailers is because we don't have land yet to permanently place them. We are aware that there are zoning and ordinance issues. When we spoke with Mr. Hamilton about the land, he had mentioned that we would try and work through those issues. We are also working with other communities nationwide who have already implemented this solution to see what workarounds they did for the zoning issues. So we would like to get back in touch with you guys just to see what are our options for land for these homes. We are going to continue to build them, and it will be up to you guys whether we can allow the homeless to live in them or not. And it was very interesting when we were outside, we were speaking with Cleat, and he said, "Hey, guys, let's go inside and get warm." And that's exactly what we want to do for our homeless, is just allow them a place to go inside and get warm. And so if you guys want to, take a look at it. It's outside. When you step in it, you'll see the difference in temperature and the difference in just being in a hardened structure versus being in a tent outside. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Michelle McMullin, if you'll give your address, please.
Good evening. It's Michelle McMullin, 2808 Seventh Avenue here in Huntsville. We have concerns about agenda items 15B and 15C, and are asking you to please hold those items for clarification on size, location, and proposed use. The city website doesn't give enough information. We checked that out, and the map on there just really doesn't specify exactly where this property is located. In light of Mr. showers' absence from a vote that impacts his district, we ask that you delay voting on this issue tonight. We only saw the agenda late last night and have been trying to get information since then. No matter what the explanation is, we're asking you to please delay the vote. We've been told that this is a very small piece of property that the proposed new owner wants to add to an adjacent warehouse property. We would like to see it for ourselves and to talk with Councilman showers upon his return to town. We feel he needs to be heard on this matter, and we need to talk to him. The property is in his district, but it also impacts Councilman Kling's as well, and will have a possible impact on Terry Heights, Hillendale, and Low Mill Village. Whether this particular property is connected to the interest in building tiny homes for homeless campgrounds or not, we're also concerned about this matter as well. We need reassurance that this property is not being considered for this usage, and want to go on the record in opposition to any tiny homes being located anywhere near Low Mill Village. We have been subjected to enough inappropriate development for too many decades, and this is why our community is in such horrible shape. Enough is enough. There are other places in town where this could go. Also, no matter how well-intentioned people may be on this subject, it is ill-conceived at best, and from everything we have heard so far, will cause harmful impact to the surrounding community. We have suffered from too many private and well-intentioned, government-driven projects for far too long and are just beginning to recover. We are excited about the business incubator at West Huntsville Elementary School, Brewery Row, and Low Mill Arts. We cannot survive any further negative impact, and if these tiny homes are allowed anywhere near the neighborhood, it will doom any positive revitalization, our safety, and property value. Brewery Row will turn into Skid Row. Again, we ask you to please delay any vote on items 15B and 15C until Councilman showers is back and we are comfortable with what is being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Susan Gill. Taylor Reed. Mr. Reed, if you'll state your address for the record, please.
Taylor Reed, 102 Waterberry Drive, Harvest, Alabama, 35749. I'm from UAH. I'm the president of High Cap Site UAH, and we've been working with, we were working with Nikki to provide funding as well as the labor and materials, and just working to make this project happen. We now realize that, you know, the groundwork is not complete, there's not land. There is problems. There's always going to be problems with anything that comes up, but I think the message to take away from tonight is, in one day, we got a house built. So there are the people. People have contacted me from all over the nation, cities all over the nation wanting to help out. I don't know anymore exactly how this is going to happen, but maybe it's a tiny home, maybe, you know, something else, what the city's working with, but the effort shows that there are people that want to help. I've had 80-year-old women who, they can't get out there and build houses, but they can quilt. So they're quilting quilts for these homeless guys, men and women in our community. So communities all over are wanting to help, and we are willing to help in any way, whatever way the city decides is okay. We would like to make that happen. You know, we didn't want to rush. We built, you know, building this goes to show that whatever we set in our minds, a community can come together and make it happen. People want to help. I want to help. People aren't in love with tiny homes, they're in love with people. We're in love with the homeless. We're in love with our community. We want to see our community off the streets. That's all we want. We can make that happen. You know, I know all of y'all are up there for a reason. You know, I'm in college learning, but everybody in this room can do something to help our community, whether it's through tiny homes or whatever we want to call it. I think this effort goes to show that there are people who are willing to help, and there are resources which aren't being used, because if they were being used, these people weren't able to come forward. So people are coming forward from all over the nation, wanting to help Huntsville, and whatever way we have to make it happen, I think this goes to show there are people out there that can help the homeless in Huntsville. So we're ready to work. We have the, you know, willpower. We're young. I'm young. I can get out there and do whatever. But there, people are showing we can make it happen, so we're going to work with you guys. We're going to set the precedent, set the groundwork, get it all done, and find a way. Don't give up. Don't give up heart. I think we can help the homeless. We can help everybody, and everybody can benefit however we decide to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Pastor TC Johnson?
TC Johnson, 1800 Sparkman Drive. I have been studying the case where the young man was killed by the policeman, and I want to applaud the police department for the way it was handled, the sensitivity, handling the family, the real compassion that dealt with that situation. And I wanted to thank chief, and I did call him and thank him, but when I went looking through the payroll, I was wondering why at his department level in 36 years comparing his pay to other departments' chief. I want you all to look at that because it doesn't look right to me, and I'm just a plain old citizen. 36 years, his pay is substantially lower than other department leaders, and his department is a department that can help this city, does help this city in a very dangerous department. So that's one of the things, Mr. Russell, I would like to understand why it is that the chief of police paid in 36 years with a master's degree is so much lower than other people who have not been working for the city in that same period of time. The other thing is, in looking through the payroll, there's a job called sanitary engineer. I didn't see it on the blue sheet. Guy gets paid a lot, not going to call any names, but I do want that looked into, and I'd like someone to tell me, if someone can tell me tonight, what a sanitary engineer is, because if that's the general paid-for sanitary engineer, I miss my calling, especially with two years on the job. So I'd like to know what a sanitary engineer is, and I'd like to thank the chief of police for the way that particular case was handled. It's an example for places like Ferguson and other places. He was sensitive, he was transparent, he reached out to sensitive areas in the community to get feedback, and when it was handled, it was handled with the greatest care and the greatest sympathy, and we should be proud of the police department for that particular case, especially at the time that it was handled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sanitary engineer.
Mr. Hamilton, who can explain the position? Is Mr. Thomas the best person to ask? Mr. Thomas? Pastor TC Johnson, what is the job description for a sanitation engineer or sanitary engineer?
That is an engineering position in our water pollution control department that has a PE requirement, but I think it'd be better explained by Randall Stewart from that department.
Mr. Stewart?
Randall Stewart, Water Pollution Control. A sanitary engineer is over the overall collection system throughout the city of Huntsville. It is, requires an engineering degree and various years of experience.
Thank you. Ms. Jackie Reed? Glad you could be with us tonight.
I appreciate the concern. Well, I was absent last Thursday night. I appreciate you missing me. I didn't want you to start singing "Peace in the Valley" yet, because I'm not leaving. I'm not leaving yet, but I appreciate your concern. I was at the school board meeting, and you changed the date of the meeting, and I forgot about it, but please tonight, tell everybody when the next meeting is. I have-- about it, but please tonight, tell everybody when the next meeting is, I have people fussing on me at Ryan's because I didn't show up here. They don't want me missing a meeting. That was probably my 11th meeting in 25 years. That's a pretty good record. Anyway, thanks for laying the public input. The pastor, Summerfield, and his wife were celebrating their 50th anniversary here tonight. He didn't have time to say that. I told him I'd say that. And I was very sad. My son and daughter can't believe that I missed a council meeting. I missed my daughter's birthday this year because of this meeting. I missed my grandson's first birthday. They won't let me forget that, I'm sure about that. Thanksgiving is my favorite time of year. I hope we all take time out to give thanks and praise to the man upstairs and be thankful for your family, your friends, your life, your health, and the many things we're blessed with. God's been good to me and my family and I hope we all remember what Thanksgiving's about. Don't eat too much on Thanksgiving Day. I want to thank, thank you for holding off all the celebrations around the courthouse till after 5 o'clock. I know you're going to start celebrating, but we can't get in the courthouse and I appreciate you looking into that and taking the time out for that. And Councilman Kling, I wish you'd get stirred up about Butler High School closing. If that's, that's not even in your district anymore though. Excuse me, you moved us out of there. I was going to say, why don't you help me keep Butler High School open? But anyway, that's not right. Traffic in this city is absolutely ungodly, ridiculous. We went up 53 the other night, took hours and hours and hours. We go up towards Athens, you can't even get there. Go south, you can't even get there. Instead of keeping on developing and giving this city away and to these developers, why don't you do your infrastructure first and then start the development? And if you think we're going to have a mess downtown, just wait till you get that Holiday Inn. That's one of my pet peeves. 99-year lease, you surely need to see a psychiatrist if you're going to give that land away. How much did we pay for that land? Which one of you would know the price that the city paid for that? Mr. Kling, you will cover, do you remember that? They can answer me in a minute. I'm not going to ask the mayor what he told me to praise for, but anyway, are we going to tear the building down for them? We gave them a $247,000 asbestos deal that we're paying for. The taxpayers can't pay for everything. You're going to tear down the aquatic center later on, the Scrugg Center, you're going to narrow Williams Avenue.
Ms. Reed, your time's up. Do you need another minute?
I sure do. I'm on a roll.
Okay, go ahead.
And I want some answers, questions answered when you get through. What all are you going to do for this developer? Why haven't we had some work sessions on this mess? He's going to pay $144,000 a year for 99 years? Please, you all, have some work sessions and let the public see if they know what halfway you're even thinking up there or if you're thinking. I'd like to know what you're going to do for the Holiday Inn, build them a parking garage for their little hotel. Are you going to tear the building down for them? What else you going to do for them? If any of you know that lease up there, please tell me a little of it before you leave tonight, please, tonight, when I sit down, if you can, if you know anything about it. Thank you very much. I'll be back.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
I'd like to, I guess, pass on some information. I think we're all certainly concerned about what may or may not happen to Butler High School. Even though it's not within the district I represent per se, it's, you know, certainly impacts the area and I did have a couple of conversations with Dr. Wodenski and Topper Bernie. If, excuse me, I'm beeping. If, if Butler were to be closed, and again, that decision's made by the school board, not by the city council. Dr. Wodenski did assure me that there's already some possibilities that would be in the works so that Butler would not be a deserted, empty school for a long period of time, but it would be put to a viable use that would be a positive for the neighborhood if it were closed. But again, Mr. Joe Fron, you back me up if I'm wrong. The school board, not the city council, runs the school system and they're the ones that make the decision about whether or not it gets closed. About the Hilton property, now I was in, I was in college when the city purchased the Hilton, you know, the property was, took place and that was constructed in the 1970s. And then you're talking about when the city, I think, believe what you meant to say was you were talking about when the city took over that property, from the Hilton. Okay. Okay. What we looked at, what I looked at on this, when this thing came out, was what is the return that we're getting for the taxpayers? I mean, we're not being nice people. Mayor Battle's a nice guy, Mr. Russell, Culver, they're good guys, but we're not trying to do deals to, just to make the developers happy. We're looking for things that are in the interest of the taxpayers. I'm not an expert, but they said that the building was in pretty bad shape and in need of, and it was cheaper to basically demolish it than to reconfigure it. The sales tax on, the sales tax and the property tax on that development, and that development's estimated to be about, is it 70 or 80 million dollars when it's all complete? That's the money that comes in that pays back what we're doing as far as lot preparation. We're not subsidizing, we're not doing anybody a favor. We're looking at what's going to bring revenue into the city. And somebody up here must be doing something right because we've got a AAA bond rating and we're in the top, I think, 6% or 7% as far as municipalities around the country. So there's got to be somebody up here that's doing something right to manage these properties. So, you know, you can say we're doing all these deals for the developers, but we're trying to make, look for deals that are going to be a good return for the taxpayers and bring in sales tax and property tax.
Thank you.
Good afternoon and good evening. My name's Sherri Saunders, 6231 East Upper River Road, Somerville, Alabama, 35670. I'd like to talk about the tiny homes. Yesterday, there were 20 people at least, if not more, that were there to assist with this tiny home that had nothing to do with any kind of construction experience or homelessness in life. What I saw yesterday was individuals who came together with an idea and within five months had implemented this idea. First, I would like to thank Nikki Beal and Taylor Reed for proving to the city of Huntsville and its constituents and anybody in this room that a single person can come together with an idea and pull together others in that idea and see that it happens. A man named Anthony Clark, he's age 49. Sandra Childers has asked me, and she leads Operation Stand Down Huntsville. Sandra Childers asked me three weeks ago to find a place for Anthony Clark, age 49, veteran. For three weeks, I have called all over the state of Alabama using contacts that I have through the committee to protect the homeless. Everybody is full. For three weeks, I have answered texts or phone calls to an individual. That breaks my heart. Yesterday, I built a house along with 20 others who had it in them to show up and give. I want the city of Huntsville to understand that we have an opportunity to build off of this. There are going to be those that don't support this idea, but I don't see anything else coming out of this city or any of the nonprofits that I have seen work for the homeless that has made an impact as what this group of guys did in five months. 30 homes, the material has been donated. We had several opportunities for some training yesterday. I know myself, I'm a contractor. When it comes to the rest of them, 28 homes, I don't think we're going to have a problem putting them together. But it was amazing and I want you to understand, everybody up there, I want you to understand, I saw it just yesterday. I've seen it happen in other places. In cities across this country, they are coming together and putting these tiny homes in the cities. There has not been any information that I have received that having a tiny home community in your town is going to create havoc to real estate. Your prices aren't going to go crazy, but I do understand her point. She doesn't want unsightly and unseemly people in her neighborhood. None of us do. That's why we want to put them in a nice-looking house. We just built one yesterday. We have an opportunity to build from this, gentlemen and ladies. I can assure you, I am not going to stop assisting people.
Do you need more time?
Yes, sir. A few more seconds.
One more.
I'm not going to stop assisting people in their dreams to help others. So I'm going to assist Nikki Beal and Taylor Reed in anything that they need and I just wanted you to understand, as I come here tonight, I have a lot I would love to speak to you about, but what I want to say is this, in five months, she put this together on her own, everything's paid for, it didn't cost y'all a dime. We need one acre of land. See that you can make that happen because I cannot stand answering the phone to Anthony Clark twice a day he calls for that home that I can't give him because everybody is full. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We're now at 8 Huntsville Utility Items. 8A is a resolution authorizing a mayor to execute a tri-party agreement among TVA, Huntsville, and PPG Industries, allowing PP Industries to participate in the Valley Investment Initiative. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Gertes, can you explain this, please?
The Valley Investment Initiative is an economic development tool of TVAs that they offer to certain types of consumers with participating local power companies, of which Huntsville Utilities is one. Each agreement is unique. It's based on the characteristics of the business, what type of business they're doing, how many people they employ, what their assets are and what their plans are, and they, they base the initiative or the incentive on those factors. So I can't really comment on the specifics of this agreement, but that's what these agreements are about. The, the idea here is that for these companies is to continue investing in the valley and to attract more industry and commercial accounts into the area.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. B is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase Bentley license and support for software. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Gertes, can you explain this, please?
Yeah, this is a continuing agreement with Bentley who provides us with mapping and engineering design CAD software. It's, it's engineering software.
Will this software help you like locate where the fiber optics need to go, things like that?
Perhaps. No, but this is design side, the next item is what you're referring to.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. C is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase Integraf license and support for software. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Gertes?
Again, as you mentioned, this, this software is more about locating services in the field so that we know where our assets are.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We have board appointments to be voted on. We have a resolution to appoint Susan J. Phelan to the Huntsville Ice Skating Complex Board of Control for a term to expire November 20, 2016. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We have a resolution to appoint Patricia Moriarty to the Madison County Department of Human Resources Board, Place 7, for a term to expire August 1, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling. Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We have a resolution to appoint Dr. Ollie Conley to the Historical Preservation Authority for a term to expire June 3, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kling. Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Do we have any board appointment nominations? Now at 10A, resolution authorized spending for payment. Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, move for payment of vouchers in the amount of $15,4582.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kling. Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Do we have a finance committee report?
No, Mr. President, there'll be some other items later in the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's going to be a busy week over the next couple of weeks as we open the ice skating park behind the Museum of Art tomorrow at 3:00 PM. And also the Rocket City Chili Cook-Off for the Child Advocacy Center will be from 11 to 3 at Clinton Avenue Parking Garage and I believe that's on Saturday. Opening of Santa's Village opens November 28 and will go through December 23. Galaxy of Lights is running. Tinsel Trail, if you saw today, the trees are going up in the park and it looks, you know, it's going to look, look a lot like the holidays. So I would encourage everybody to watch all the activities that are going on. All those are part of the activities that the city of Huntsville has a party in and we offer everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a wonderful holiday season. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to wish everybody likewise a happy holiday season, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Also, this Saturday, the 22nd, Macedonia Primitive Baptist Church, Pastor Ananiz Green and myself will be hosting a Feed the Homeless event at his church located on Dupree Worthy Road. Also, I'll be taking about several buses. I don't know how many, Mr. Brown, that we've come up with yet, but picking up residents from the Merlin V Mayberry Family Lodge. We'll also make pickups at the Downtown Rescue Mission, the Salvation Army, and the Breaking Free Rescue Mission as well. So if anyone wants to go with us and volunteer to help, not only are we feeding the homeless, but we are providing them with care packages. Unfortunately, this year, we were not able to get coats and blankets like we normally do. We've been doing this now for the last four or five years since I've been on the council. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today was a very somber afternoon for me. A good friend of mine and I think probably people here in this room, Rufus Hartman, had passed away earlier this week and there was a service for him this afternoon. Rufus had been married to one of our former city employees, had been a friend that I've known for about probably close to 30 years and his, you know, he'll be missed greatly. Also, I want to thank those that came out to my town meeting Monday night. We had a pretty lively session. Gary Whitley from Huntsville Utilities, please report to the superiors. Does yeoman work in dealing with the concerns that people have? I think there's something very popular about Huntsville utility problems coming up at my town meetings, but Gary does a great job and Joe, please pass along that we appreciate the good work that he's done in helping, helping to solve problems and providing assistance. Also, I want to join everyone in wishing everybody a good Thanksgiving with the time to kind of look back and I think we've had some discussion tonight that perhaps makes all of us be aware of how fortunate we are and the gratitude that we need to express for, for the good that we have. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business items for action. We have no business items for introduction. We are now at 15. The chair holds 15B, C, K, and T. L has been deleted. Are there any other items you'd like to hold? I have B, C, K, and T, as in Tom.
And L was deleted, correct?
L is deleted, correct. 15A is a resolution authorizing a city attorney to pay the claim of the Blue, a Blue Family Holdings LLC. D is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank Letter Credit Number 362000834003 for Legend Wood Subdivision. E is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke First Commercial Bank Letter Credit Number 1019 for Oakhurst Fourth Edition Subdivision. F is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke The Traveler's Identity Company Bond Number BE0931542 for Stone Mark Subdivision. G is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute an imminent agreement between the city of Huntsville and the Huntsville Housing Authority for the provisions of alternate police services. H is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one landscape maintenance lead worker. I is an ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 14665 by changing appropriating funding within various departments and funds. J is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations. M is a request for approval to advertise and fill two regular full-time positions of animal service shelter attendant grade eight. service shelter attendant grade eight. N is a resolution authorizing subordination agreement to the environmental covenant granted to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management by Clarkson Square LP. O is a resolution authorizing mayor to make an agreement with Ross Ivy for assistance in preparing the 2015 through 2020 HUD Consolidated Plan Preparation Analysis of Impediments Plan. P is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter a license agreement between the city of Huntsville and Downtown Huntsville, Inc. Q is an ordinance authorizing disposal of the identified surplus equipment located at 101 Church Street, Suite 201 for recycling per agreement with Mars LLC. R is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreement between the city of Huntsville and low bidder Reed Contract Services, Inc. for Governor's West Rideway improvements, base bid and option number one, option number one, project number 6514RD12. S is ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 14665 by changing authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. Chair moves consolidation approval of 15A, 15D through J, 15M through S.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at 15B. 15B is an ordinance clearing real property described as lot three, a block number three, second Clinton addition to the city of Huntsville as surplus and no longer needed for an emissal purpose. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Ephraim, could you explain this, please?
Members of the council, items B and C are related, and they involve a lot on Hall Street owned by the city of Huntsville. There is an easement that runs through the middle of that lot. It can only be used for parking, and the adjoining property owner wants to buy it for that purpose. So it has no value. It cannot be developed.
Council members, I talked to Dr. Showers earlier today. He had made no mention of me holding this, but obviously Ms. McGowan has asked us to hold it, so council members, would you like to hold it?
I would so move.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Kling, you're holding, you're postponing this to the next regular council meeting. Mr. Culver, you agree to that? Second. All those in favor are postponing this to the next regular council meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. C is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a purchase agreement between the city of Huntsville and George J. King and his wife, and his wife Shannon L. King for purchase of real property described as lot three, a block three, second Clinton addition to the city of Huntsville. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kling. This is similar to 15B. The chair moves to hold this to the next regular council meeting. Is there a second?
Yeah, I second it.
Ms. Kling has seconded it. All of them in favor postponing this to the next regular council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 15K is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement with the low bidders, meaning specifications is outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Council members, Dr. Showers and Ms. Robinson had contacted me and asked that we hold this to our next regular council meeting, so the chair moves. We postpone this to the next regular council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. All those in favor are postponing this to our next regular council meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. T is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute documents related to the SEC-MCDC Initiative. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Taylor, could you explain this, please?
Yes. Council members, this is the Securities and Exchange Commission has a program that they call the Municipal Compliance Disclosure Cooperative Initiative. MCDC is what's printed here. And that is a program by which they are asking municipal issuers like us who issue debt to look at all of our reporting obligations over the past five years and decide if there's anything that we should have reported that we didn't. So it's a voluntary reporting program. The deadline for filing is December the first. We're not sure that the city is going to file under that program. We don't have any material issues we know that we need to report. But if we decide we need to do that, then you have to authorize the mayor to do that and to enter into any other agreements or sign any other documents that may be required. So this is the last council meeting before we have to decide whether or not we need to do it. So again, we need the, the mayor needs your authorization if we decide to participate in the program, and it's in the city's best interest to do that.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 16 is legal department items, transactions. We have two vacations to easement and two vacations right away. The chair moves to consolidate and approve 16A, 1 and 2, and 16B, 1A and 1B.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kling. All those in favor consolidation approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
Since we made reference to things being carried over the next council meeting, I think it might be helpful to the public just to mention that the next council meeting is gonna be Thursday, December the 4th, since we rearranged it because of Christmas, so that anybody wants to can come in.
That's correct. The next council meeting will be December 4th, and then December 18th will be the two meetings in December. We've advertised that in the Huntsville times, and we've put that as much as we can, so hopefully everybody knows. Ms. Reed?
Thank you for telling everybody once again.
I just want to make sure you're here.
Well, everybody don't take the paper anymore, and a lot of them don't have computers, so I appreciate. And I just want to say that the city council meetings, if you miss them on Thursday night, they're rerun, thank you all, on a Monday night, because I did see you last Monday night, and I appreciate you missing me. I want to go back to the property at the Holiday Inn. I think, Mr. Kling, you all were still sitting up there when you bought it from the Holiday Inn. The city purchased this property from the Holiday Inn. Am I wrong? Nobody ever wants to answer any of my questions when I ask them, but you do everybody else's. We paid 6.8 million for that property without the building, supposedly so according to Glenn Watson. You don't buy that building with the property. I've never heard of such a thing, and I've got a real estate license, but that's what you all did up there. You bought that property for 6.8 million unless I'm wrong.
That sounds...
You valued it at 2.8 million. Some of you do. I wonder if you even know how much you paid for it. I'm for the big developers laying some money on the table and let the public believe. It'll take 99 years to get your money back, Mr. Kling, you was talking about. You won't even be here to see none of it. You won't know what happened to it. And then you're gonna landscape it. You might be here, because I'll be here. I'll be here. I'll surely be here, from the grave if nothing else. But anyway, none of my questions was answered. What you gonna do? Tear it down Farham, Narrow Williams Avenue, and downtown is a mess. It is already. Traffic is a mess. But, and I'm not through with Stone Middle School yet as to how much the city paid to tear that down. And sometime, look up your paperwork. You know, when you can't give city employees but a 1% raise, we keep going back and borrowing money and giving our land away to these developers. How do y'all get elected? That's my last question of the night. Don't answer that. I don't want to hear it.
Mr. Ephraim, when do you expect the development agreement to be brought to the council?
On the Holiday Inn property?
Yes.
With, hopefully before Christmas.
Ms. Reed, the development agreement hasn't been finalized or brought to the council, so we don't know what's gonna be in it. That's why we can't answer your questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Kling?
Okay. I think I can answer every question. The property, I remember, was somewhere around 6 million, so you say it's 6.8 million, we'll go with that. The property tax on the property at 6.8 million versus the property on this development when it's completed at, let's say, what, 70 million, that differential in the property tax plus some new sales tax, it's how this thing works. Okay. I'm just trying to give you the information I can.
Mr. Cox?
Jerry Cox, 4029 Telstar Circle. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, on these lots of activities that's going on in the city having to do with Christmas and so on, I just want to remind everyone that of the greatest of opportunities of all is to ride the Santa train. So if you want to go out to the North Alabama Railroad Museum out on Chase Road, the main depot and all is in Councilman Russell's district, but it extends over into Councilman Shauer's district. So that's December the 6th and 7th. Bring your kids, your grandkids. If you don't have a kid, go down to the homeless shelter and get one and take them out, and they can ride the train, a real train, comfortable, heated, wonderful seats, and ride the Santa Claus. Talk to Santa Claus, get a treat. Since you all are so much in love with the state law that lets you all manage Huntsville Utilities, just a couple of questions. There has been no reduction in the gas rate in at least the last 14 months, yet natural gas as well as oil prices have fallen substantially. So why do the residents or the people that utilize Huntsville Utilities are not seeing the benefit of these major reductions in natural gas prices? First, second, in October, the water availability charge went up 19.13%. Now, I know, and I supported the three-tiered rate increase, but I do not believe, at least the information is maleable to me, that anywhere in it did it talk about the availability charge going up so drastically. The rate on the usage? Yes. Then the people can control how much water they use, and so they can control their bill some, but they have no way of controlling a 19.13% increase in the water availability charge. Third and last, when I paid my October bill on November 4th, Mr. President, I added $3.50 for project share for Salvation Army to give to elderly people that needs help in paying for their utilities. But the donation was listed on my November bill as a negative bounce forward, and my November bill was reduced by $3.50. So I was the recipient of the $3.50 that I gave to help someone else because apparently the clerks and all down Huntsville Utilities don't know how to handle project share donations. This is not the first time that this has happened to me. So y'all going to manage Huntsville Utilities, there's your three items. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Cox, yeah, I can't answer any of those three items, but I'll find out answers. And this is at your home address? Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gertis?
Mr. Gertis is here from Huntsville Utilities. He may not be able to answer it, but if he can't, could he provide the answer at the next public meeting if he's not able to? But I think that's a very provoking question about since the rates of oil and natural gas have dropped, is there a rate decrease coming?
I can't answer that, but I will definitely look into it. Mr. Cox, we have done a lot of work to secure the lowest rate possible, but we do buy natural gas on the open market, just like any other natural gas utility does, any public one. And so we do, we work very hard to try to keep those rates as low as possible, but I will try to get some answers for you on that, sir. As to the availability charges, they were part of the fee increase package that we brought forth in 2012. The reason that we go heavier on the availability rates, Mr. Cox, has to do with the capital cost of providing water utility to all of our customers. Unfortunately, utility business is capital intensive, and we have to have pipe in the ground no matter how much water customers are using, and that's a change in rate structure that you'll find industry-wide. We know customers don't like it, but it's just a fact of, a fact of the business that we do. As to your project share, I will look into that directly first thing tomorrow morning, and we'll get that fixed for you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Ms. McGowan?
I just wanted to thank you for holding 15B and C for two weeks. We do appreciate it, and certainly appreciate you understanding our concerns. I think it'll be fine, but I've already received several text messages and phone calls on the phone. I've got a playback from neighbors, so it's gonna be good to reassure them. But you guys have a great Thanksgiving, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Sir, if you'll go to the microphone, please, state your name and address for the record.
My name is James Butler. My address is 7205 Whitesburg Drive.
Mr. Butler, if you could position the microphone directly in front of your mouth. Thank you.
7205 Whitesburg Drive, 35802. I've only lived there about three years. The previous, I moved here in 1957, and we lived over by Goldsmith Schiffman Field, and we bought groceries at Star Market from Chick Russell. And I left a handout last time, last meeting.
Yes, sir.
And it was one like this for each member of the council, and I hope you had a chance to look at it. The significant page in it is page three, and what it shows is two ways to carve up a bail bond. My son was put on trial for a week, and they made a serious mistake in fifth grade arithmetic, and called him guilty and gave him 25 years each count and sent him over to Limestone Prison. And they got the math wrong. This, if you look through like an appeal, it would repeal, I mean reverse, several Alabama judges that were imported up here because the judges at the courthouse over there didn't want to be in on the case because they, they knew, probably knew that it was a frame-up. And the, I got, brought extra copies back. So the reason for these copies in this is so that we can sing from the same sheet of music, because we'll have copies of the same sheet of music. And I have developed cataracts, and I have to have them surgically removed. And what they want to do is to have a lens implant. And so I'm gonna, if y'all don't have a result, I was gonna poll the, I was gonna poll the members and say, like at the bottom there, it says choose A or B. Well, the judiciary, the Alabama judiciary from the bottom all the way to the top through the Supreme Court and the Alabama bar chose B.
And Mr. Butler, I hate to interrupt. Your time's up. Do you need another minute? We're not exactly sure what you want us to do. We've listened to you and understand your problem, but do you want us to act or do something for you?
No.
Okay.
I want y'all to read the handout.
Okay.
And select A or B. Now, ask each one of which you did.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll answer that. Yeah, we're not gonna be, council members are free to talk to you anytime they want, but that's not appropriate question to ask us?
Not appropriate.
No, sir.
It's amazing.
Mr. President?
Mr. Culver?
Just a quick question. I have this here, but I don't have a A or B page on it. I don't think...
But that's number three.
Page three.
Number three. Page number three has at the bottom of it.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir. Okay. All right, sir. That's all I needed, Mr. President. Thank you, sir.
I could go up to the Circuit Court and file a suit against Jane Smith and be in front of a judge, but after what they pulled, the exculpatory omissions and everything, and threw away motions, handed in motions in several cases, and they threw them away. And the judges never got to see them, the imported judges. So I'm just saying that we got worse than our ordeal. We got, it's like, what's his name?
Again, Mr. Butler, we understand that you don't agree with whatever the court ruled. We're not, we're listening to you. We're not sure what you want us to do, but is there anything you can ask us to do that we might be able to do for you?
Well, I don't know how to say it, but we did municipal bonds as well as county bonds, and they tried us only on county bonds. But if you look at the way that municipal bonds are calculated, then y'all have a, y'all should have had a input back when. But I can't let it go.
Mr. President?
This is, I can't let it go.
Okay. We understand. Ms. Kling?
Mr. Butler, I... Uh, Mr. Butler, uh, I can't grasp the, um, you know, what you must be feeling about this, but I certainly want you to know that I, um, I certainly respect and understand the concern and, you know, what you must be going through on this. Uh, I guess a question that I'm trying to find out about, and I think that's what Mr. Russell was talking about, is jurisdiction. Uh, could we ask if Mr. Joffreon could look into this and give us a report? Is there any jurisdiction that, that city government has or is this all under the jurisdiction of the county government? Uh, the county government is separate from us. Similar, you heard me talk about how the school board is separate, uh, from us. We have certain limitations, but could Mr. Joffreon look and give us a report if there's any jurisdiction that we would have, uh, in this circumstance?
I've got, uh, all the, on the first page of the handout, I've got all the civil case numbers. The purpose of all those civil cases was to file, file them against us, drain all of our money in retainers and then hit us with the upgrade criminally. And then we didn't have any money. We had already spent what we had. And, uh, Bruce Gardner never even talked to me. They locked me up where I couldn't get this, this information to the jury.
Again, Mr. Butler, we, we sympathize with you, but this is, we, we probably need to stop right now. I ask you to stop right now?
One more sentence.
Quickly, please.
In 1933, when the, uh, Nazis started going around knocking the Jews in the head and dragging them off to a prison, well, that's what happened to me. It was, they had a SWAT team on, they had a SWAT on their backs and they put me in over here throughout the trial. And that's the exact same strategy that was used over there. And my father was gone the first five years of my life fighting at the Battle of the Bulge under General Patton to stop that. And they did it to me here. So I don't know why you wouldn't have jurisdiction. But that's a good point, though, to look at.
I mean, we could give Mr. Joffreon to look into it and advise the council.
Y'all heard of civil asset forfeitures?
Yes. Mr. President, I'm
Yeah, Ms. Butler, your time's up.
If I can get a copy of the package, I'll take a look.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you. Does anyone else have?
Can't come back till next year.
Okay.
Because of the cataract surgery.
Okay. Sir, would you like to address the council?
My son Bobby Hall was roadside towing. Uh, my company was involved in a bid that the city had, uh, for the wrecker service, uh, providing it for the city. We bid in on this thing probably a little over a month ago and, uh, was low bid on, on some of the, uh, different sections that they had. And, uh, and it's come before the city council, uh, applies, uh, no of for, uh, for approval. And it keeps getting extended, Dan. Just concerned as to why.
Uh, council members aren't ready to vote. They require more information.
Okay, all right. Well, I just, is there any information that I could provide to the city that would?
Not, not that I know of. We're, we're working through the appropriate people in the departments that are running the bid.
All right. Well, I'd like to wish all of y'all, uh, uh, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Move to adjourn?
We're adjourned.